The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. So, I didn't realize that.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm just gonna put your second.
Okay. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of August 13th, 2019 be approved as amended? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Oh my goodness, here we go. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as amended to include the approval of the minutes of July 9th, 2019 as submitted? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education? Acceptance of recommendation from the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes as amended? Budget transfers July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019? Approval of request to dispose of unserviceful textbooks? Questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. May I have a motion and a second that the Treasurers report, including the cash report? General Fund Cash Report? The General Fund Revenue Status Report? General Fund Budget Status Report? School Lunch Fund Cash Report? And School Lunch Fund Revenue and Expense Budget Report for the month ending May 31st, 2019 be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, special reports.
We do have one special report this evening. We have a textbook presentation, so I'll invite Tony Kerr, Bay Trail English teacher, and Kristin Williamson, our Director of Humanities up front.
...that I was shocked to know that this book was not on our read list, as it was one of my favorites in middle school.
Hi.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the school board seeing us about this proposal for a textbook. We were also surprised that it was not on the list, but we're very pleased to be here to present the book. What we're hoping to do is replace our short story unit with something a little more compact and tied together, so students can work on a lot of the different standards, especially the literary elements such as conflict, point of view. They get a chance to look at thematic elements and how the structure of the story helps build those. In terms of assessments, we're looking at students doing a lot of reflection on what it's like to be themselves. An opportunity for them to think about others and the stereotypes that exist. And obviously, in the story, there's a lot of differences in social classes. So it's an opportunity for the students to really enjoy a story. Katie Varley, our grade level department chair, proposed the story. And I think the one thing she felt that she wanted to share tonight is that it's very memorable. A lot of students remember this story. We remember it when we were young readers. So it really does make an impact. It seems awfully simplistic, but it's a very complicated story. And we want to give the students an opportunity to dwell into something different. I do have some notes, but I won't read all of them to you. One of the things that we wanted to focus on is the standards with the story. And what we have is a variety of reading standards, standard 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, if you use the old Common Core standards. The new standards, the new generation standards, are just a little bit different, but we haven't had a chance to match those up yet. But we want the students to look at what does a story imply? What does a story suggest? And why does the author do that? What is the role of the author in the story? So that's one of the standards we wanted to look at, is how do they construct the story and breaking down the structure? We're seeing more and more of those questions on the standards-based ELA exams that we've had the last five or six years. We also wanted the kids to have a chance to analyze the text, take a look at the plot elements and how they interact. If you take a look at Pony Boy, he has a lot of different types of conflicts. And it's an opportunity for the kids to see how those conflicts drive his actions and his motivations as he moves forward. So we're hoping that the school board would love to approve this book for the 7th grade English department. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Stay gold, Mr. Kerr. All right. That was the end of our textbook presentation special reports.
Okay. Thank, wait, you said thank you? No, it's not yet.
Not yet.
Thank you. No visitors tonight? Okay. And Levia is still on vacation? Okay. Superintendent's reports.
I have, there's a lot of reports on here tonight, so we'll do student and staff honors. I'll turn it over to Mr. Joe Argento for our annual school lunch report. And then over to Dr. Sansucci for our bus inspection report. A brief update on the new law around cameras on school bus stop arms, as well as an update on the 2018 Elementary additions project, which we approved back in May of 2018. And then an analysis of fund balance and tax rates for the 2019-20 school year. And then Mr. Pfeiffer will wrap it up with a leadership summit review. So I have a very lengthy superintendent report, which I believe is one slide. But it is the bus safety program. And Mr. Argento was here both nights on August 6th and 7th, because it starts with a little bit about the cafeteria and how that works for parents. And then the kids get on buses at Cobble's and they go over to Harris Hill, where they run through the school bus safety program, which teaches our incoming kindergarten students about the Strife for Five, the five most important school bus safety rules. Introduces them also to the cafeteria experience. So you can see some of our future class of, I don't remember. It's a long time. I usually say, I can't do math that quick off the top of my head. But you know, it was really a great night, and so I just wanted to say thank you. This year, I was only able to attend the 7th. But we had, and Mr. Argento is in the audience, but we had huge turnouts on both nights. Just a very large turnout of parents and kids. And I will tell you that every year when I go, it's always a good mix of kids who are a little scared and parents who are excited, or kids who are excited and parents who are a little sad. And this year, it felt like every kid was like, let's go, get on the bus, let's move this. And actually, Emily was there as a parent of a kindergartner, so it was really fun. It's my first time being able to announce a board member there too with a kindergartner. So it was great, and I believe if all goes well, Bill will be there next year with his kindergartner. So that's awesome.
So can I just make a comment real quick? Of that picture there, especially the four little ones on the bottom left? That's how they come in.
Yep.
And then here you go.
Ah, graduation.
Yes, graduation. They're all young adults when they leave, but what a, I mean, it's just, it's really an honor to have the children be here and get them started.
Yeah, and our, Joe does a great job with the cafeteria portion. Our, just huge kudos to our transportation crew, our bus drivers. They're hot nights, they're in the summer, they come in because they want to, you know, they volunteer for it. We pay them, but you know, they come in in the summer and it's great. And the parents ride the bus with the kids, and so it really is a great experience, especially for the little guys and girls who've never ridden a school bus before.
Big deal.
Yep. And I will share too, just, it's never come up, but also know that even though if you're not attending a Penfield school, you're attending a school within the Penfield School District, those students come too. So we actually had a couple of kids who will be riding school buses for like the Penfield Village Preschool Transitional K Program. So they don't come for the cafeteria portion, but they come and ride the bus, so they can learn the safety for when they're riding the bus. So, yep, we're trying to get everybody in there.
Nice.
I will now invite Mr. Argento up to give us our school lunch report.
Hi, Joey.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
And thank you. So I'm here to give you an overview of how we did last year and how we're gonna move forward into 2019 and '20. And Tom, thanks for being there Wednesday night. I will back up what he says, it is packed both nights. And everyone is, they just, they can't wait to get on the buses. And yeah, they sit through our presentation, but I do get a lot of compliments when families leave. So they are appreciative of what we're doing for them on the food service end as well. So without further ado, I'll get into how we did last year. Well, this way. So last year, we budgeted 292,000 meals. It was kind of like a magic number that we've been working off the last couple of years. We haven't really seen huge spikes in participation. However, last year, we exceeded that goal and ended up selling 296,000, almost 297,000 meals. Don't know where those other six people went, but would've been nice to say 297,000. But we did see a little bit of a spike this year. And when I do the participation estimate, I use an average daily participation and multiply that by the amount of days we hope that we're gonna serve. And that was 1,668. What we actually ended up with 1,697. To note also, breakfast participation went up 4% this year, but accumulatively over the last three years, we've seen that 4%, 5%, 6%. So we're nudging up at breakfast slowly as well, which is good to hear, because that extra revenue definitely helps in the budget. So with my estimates of participation, I also use that number to figure out how much aid we're gonna get and how much revenue. And both the state and federal aid were on target for that budget year. Our other sales was also up this year again, and that was slightly greater than what we budgeted. That number kind of creeps up. All other sales is any of our à la carte stuff, bottled water, chips, bagels, any other snack items, ice cream. So that always seems to go up every year, which is good, because that helps the revenue side. And you know, other sales, as I mentioned, that just helped offset the higher food purchase costs. So in the end, we ended up making $29,284. We added that to our fund balance, and our fund balance does remain in compliance with the limitations that we're allowed to have. So again, the participation, it was excellent and definitely helped, always helps this program when we get it. So moving forward into this year, we're gonna nudge up our estimate to 295,000 meals. Something to consider, I mean, it's not a huge jump, but we did have two days last year where it was snow day, so we actually lost that participation. And that was potential for almost another 3,000, over 3,000 meals. So I think 295,000 meals is a safe bet for us. All the bids came back in. They do always increase a little bit. Nothing too crazy, just a slight increase in some of our bids. That's milk, food, which is our frozen and grocery, plus our milk, bread, our basic whole. All the cooperative bids came back, they all just nudged up a little bit. Employee labor always increases and is gonna be doing that to stay, accommodate for minimum wage. So our labor cost does go up this year again. Employee benefits actually decreased a little bit this year. So that kind of helps with this year's budget. And materials and supplies actually decreased a little bit. That's our paper goods and basically our trays and stuff like that. Those costs actually, we're projecting them to be a little less this year. And we're gonna increase this budget with some of the equipment purchases that are upcoming in the project. We want to use some of our fund balance to purchase some of that equipment. So we're increasing that this year. Overall, from this year to last year's budget, it's about a 1.4% increase, which isn't too bad. Again, the 295,000 meals is what we're anticipating. The ADP that I'm using is 1,685. At breakfast, I'm gonna estimate 82,500 breakfasts. That is almost exactly what we served last year. So if, I think that's a realistic number. And the revenues in aids, I'm using 295,000 meals to build off of, those are gonna be very close to the actuals that we received last year. So those were factored into this year's budget. There's always child nutrition provisions that we have to follow, and these are the USDA's. Really, they've been on hold for the last two years. I just like to always bring this up in the presentation, because you know, we can't just serve anything like everyone else. We are heavily regulated, and the whole grain requirements are staying the same. The sodium reductions are gonna remain the same. And our professional development standards for our staff, those are also remaining the same. What we're hearing from USDA and the state is we're probably gonna anticipate this to happen for another year or two. Everything's just gonna hold in place till Sonny Perdue figures out what he wants to do here. But I'm not foreseeing anything changing yet, and that doesn't hurt us. We're not deregulating anything. We're staying the course with what we do with our grains and milks and you know, what we serve the kids. The state has their provisions as well that are on us. Lunch shaming policy impacts, we are gonna be, this will be the second year that the lunch shaming policy is in effect. And we'll continue to train our staff to make sure that every student comes through the lunch line and has a positive experience, even if they have a negative balance. It doesn't matter. They will get the lunch that they have on their tray, and we don't discuss balances with students. We work on that through the Food Service Office with parents. This year is gonna be a review year for us. Every three years, state education comes in and they go through our procurement process, and they actually look at the rest of the program. Make sure we're processing applications correctly, make sure we're claiming proper meals, make sure we're claiming the right number of meals. So they'll be in sometime in November, and they'll take a look at all of our program and how we're doing. And I'll report back to you next year on how that goes. And then this year, the, we're gonna get increased aid for reduced-priced meals. It's been Penfield's practice, we started this a while ago, not to charge families that qualified in the reduced category, not to charge them for anything. We treat it as a free meal. So New York State this year has decided, well, we're gonna do what Penfield's been doing for about eight years now. We're gonna, they're gonna reimburse us that quarter that we don't get. We've just taken that quarter and absorbed it in lieu of hopes of higher participation, which we did see once we started doing that. So this year, we will actually receive reimbursement from the state, an extra 25 cents, which will probably add up to about another $3,500 in aid, which is gonna be helpful. Minimum wage is gonna increase again this year, it'll be another 70 cents. You know, this always is gonna be an impact, this is gonna be an impact of us right up to the end of 2020. You know, it has an impact on the program, drives our cost up a little bit. But hopefully, this will be ending here soon. But overall, going into this budget, I think if we can maintain a higher participation and we will not have to increase any of our lunch prices or breakfast prices. Proposing, in the way the revenues look, I think we can leave everything the same. $2.80 for lunch and $1.50 for breakfast. And any of the families qualifying for reduced will be treated as a free family. So you know, participation is what drives our revenue in this, and I don't foresee that being a problem this year. This is how we compare to other districts in our area. We're floating around in the middle, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest. But we're a good deal for milk and we're the best deal for breakfast, so. Any questions?
Board members. Barb?
Where is water in all of this?
As far as, like, being able to purchase it?
Or for the school board, because we didn't get any tonight.
Man. It's with the grilled cheese sandwiches.
You thought I was going with grilled cheese, and I got ya. No, just teasing.
That's all right.
We're okay, we're, the cookies were there.
The cookies were there.
I don't, I really don't have a question.
Okay, Mark?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The breakfast, where, who, what grade levels, essentially elementary, middle, high school, are buying the most breakfast, and where are you seeing the increases in breakfasts?
We saw, I saw an increase this year at the elementary level in breakfast. I don't know why specifically, but this year, the K through 5 group exceeded the, you know, 6 through 12. The high school does have a pretty heavy participation with grilled bagels, but those are an à la carte item and may explain other sales. But we do, I did see this year, K through, K through 5 increased, so.
The other thing is, we talked about, you mentioned the increase in sales?
Mm-hmm.
And you also mentioned the suspension of the changing of the nutritional guidelines from USDA. Do you think there's any correlation to that, as far as them not making things tighter, allowing you more latitude in what you make?
Yeah, actually, and I think the correlation is the bulk of our students coming in don't know what the difference ever was. So a lot of the kids are participating that are coming in into the program in the last couple of years, they never, they don't know what a white, you know, a white wheat, you know, a white wheat hot dog bun is or something that's not whole grain. I think part of the kids that have graduated were the ones that suffered the biggest impact on the nutritional standards changing. So the new ones coming in, they don't know what they've missed out on. And they won't if they don't see this, so no. But I think that is part of it. I think it's part of it.
And then the last question, we're talking about, you know, a big issue comes up, lunch shaming for parents. And we certainly are not, it's not about the shaming, it's really about the matter of how much money do you, are we, do you think we have outstanding in terms of unpaid?
It's a couple thousand dollars.
Okay.
You know, and that's the realistic, you know, number. It's a few thousand dollars, and you know, that gets absorbed into the program.
And that's across all the buildings for the whole year?
Yes, yep, through all the buildings. Mm-hmm.
Good.
Because that charge, those meals, those unpaid meals cannot be charged against the food service program. So we're having conversations about how that's gonna be treated. I mean, all districts are having this conversation. And so Joey and I will be working towards a letter, some information for the board on that, probably for the next meeting, in terms of the amount outstanding, how we intend to treat it. You know, what's our plan with that regard going forward? Because it has been growing. It's been growing fairly steadily, I think. And we sort of need to be able to, as a district, understand where, how we're gonna treat that as we go forward. So you'll be receiving some communication from us with some details and some, you know, backup data and so forth, probably for the September board meeting.
Okay? Thank you.
Any quick questions? No? Well, as always, very thorough, very informative.
Thank you. And I always like to thank the board and thank my staff. They're the ones that are out there every day, you know, making it happen, and they love it. So we'll continue to make every opportunity for the kids to come through the line a positive one and make their overall experience here in Penfield the best, so.
Very good.
Thank you. And welcome to the new board members.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for several presentations.
Thank you. The first is just really a very brief update. This is the time of year typically that we receive from New York State, from the Department of Transportation, the results of the ongoing, their ongoing bus inspection program. So I know you know, but just for folks who might be listening, the New York State school buses are inspected twice a year. Your car gets inspected once a year. The inspection for a school bus is twice as often and much more rigorous. Having said that, the statewide average for passing of that, of that, of those inspections is about 95%. If you fall below 90%, the DOT will mandate a corrective action plan. They'll wanna, because they are school buses, they'll wanna see that you have a plan going forward to bring that average passing rate up to, you know, a higher level, above 90%. They're rigorous inspections, but the intention is that you pass, right? They don't, they don't want to come in and see bus failures, because it means kids might be in put in harm's way. So in 1819, our rate was right at that statewide average, 95.3 versus 95.8. So that's 150 inspections of 77 buses, 143 of those passed on the initial inspection, and they all passed on reinspection. So it's very difficult to get 100%, because as much as a light bulb burned out in a taillight that was on when you checked before the inspector got there is enough to fail your bus. So it's a, we have a, you know, it's a credit to our, to the mechanics who work so hard every day to ensure that they're safe and to the record-keeping that they go through to be able to demonstrate to the inspectors that we've complied with all of the rules and that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Are there any questions about that? I have another bus-related item, and it has to do with the change in legislation for this year. So school bus stop-arm cameras, they've recently been in the news. I saw there was an article in the Democrat and Chronicle, I think, yesterday, the day before, with regard to this. So the idea here is that New York State is, through this law, is interested in encouraging, or deterring, I guess I should say, motorists from passing stop-school buses. So some, this has been proposed and re-proposed over the course of the last couple of years. It took them a few tries at this, I think, to come to an agreement that all the parties felt they could support in terms of cost, cost of the state mandates, the way it interacts with the vehicle traffic law, you know, it's the, it's, I read the bill. It's pretty complicated, just because of the, all the, if you think about it, all the pieces of potential existing law that it touches. But the need for it was demonstrated and mentioned in the bill rationale. In 2013, NAP, the New York State Association for Pupil Transportation, did a statewide one-day survey. They just asked all school districts, they picked May 1st. If you have a passed school bus, please report it to us. And so on that day, what, three years ago, there were 306 illegal passes, and six buses were passed on the right-hand side, the loading-unloading side. So clearly, you know, there's a need for this kind of legislation or a need for something to be done. And so this is New York State's attempt to address that. So it isn't, the, the system itself is an automatic system that mounts on the stop-arm, the stop sign that swings out. It's activated when it swings out. If it senses a passing car, it takes a picture. And then that picture can be used to take action against the motorists. So you know, you can, as you think about the complexities, and we'll talk about those in a little bit, it's sort of akin to the stoplight cameras, really, that were in existence throughout the city of Rochester. So it has some of the same sort of questions and complexity around it. The way it's designed is the, we have to enter into a cooperative agreement, a partnership with a municipality. The municipality funds the stop-arm cameras. As part of the legislation, they said they won't be state-adeable. We can't, we could, we could go out and buy them, but we would bear the entire cost. There's, the idea here is that a municipality purchases, pays for the cameras, and then collects the fines. The fines then can be shared. The idea is that the municipality is reimbursed by the fine revenue, but there can be a further sharing arrangement between the school and the municipality. $250, $275, $300 fines escalating over an 18-month period. It's akin to a parking ticket. It cannot be- It, it cannot be used to impact your insurance rates, um, and it, and it is not considered a moving violation. And I think that has to do, again, to, I had sort of the same feeling, but it has, but you think about how the, the complexities to this, right? It's not a police officer witnessing it, it's, you can, you know, as I started to think through it, that initial reaction, I, I started to think a little bit about that it makes sense. So, I did some surveying of my peers to see who was moving forward with this. It's brand-new legislation. I think everyone's interested, but no one has taken a first step yet. There's some conversation going on. Some of the complexities that everyone's going to face is which municipality. So, you know, the easy answer is for us, because we could say Penfield, well, Penfield has town court, they can issue, they have the infrastructure, but, you know, our school district extends well beyond the boundaries of Penfield, so it wouldn't make sense for every, every town in the, in the, in our jurisdiction, so maybe the county, but we have two counties. So, we're going to need to figure that out. I mean, the possibility certainly exists. I just think nobody quite yet knows how, the mechanics of how to make this work. So, that's going to have to be worked out. You know, what the, what the costs and the extent of the program, um, you know, would we, are we eventually going to move towards all buses having the stop-arm cameras? Would it be, uh, you know, as we replace buses? How's that going to work? What can municipalities support? That'll have to be worked out. And then, I think there's going to meet, need to be, as these agreements are reached, there's going to be some fine print details that are going to end up being important. Who stores the video footage? We're not allowed to see it. The cameras take the, the video, um, we turn it over to the municipality and they make the determination as to guilt or innocence. They pursue, they issue the fines. So, who stores that video footage? There's, the law mentions a chain of custody, inappropriate chain of custody, so what does that look like? How does the payments work, sharing details? So, it's complicated, it, but the idea, again, I go back to that initial, um, that initial, premise that, that generated the law in the first case. The intention is, we know, and our drivers will tell you, that they are frequently passed with, when their reds are on. So, either through inattention or, or I don't know, uncaringness, um, the, it happens fairly frequently, and the intention is that this is one way at least, um, that we can, um, address that. So, that's where we're at. I think, um, in, in terms of Penfield's interest, I think we are. I think we're going to need to work through it along with everybody else. So, um, as I asked my peers, I sent an email out to ask in preparation for this meeting, and I got a lot ba, a lot of answers back. I was going to ask that, ask that question at the next meeting, so, we'll figure it out. But, I would expect it's going to be fully, probably a year as we all move forward. The, the district, I think, and the county that has the first jump-up is, I believe Spencerport already has stop-arm cameras, so they've got infrastructure in place, but they also are sort of in the same, same spot the rest of us are in, and how do we implement this? How does that work? So, are there any questions? Yeah?
Do we, do we have any data collection for us, like?
Nothing formal.
Nothing formal?
I don't have a report that says how many buses were stopped. I, we just, we don't, we just have never collected that data.
Is that something that we might want to do?
We certainly could.
In advance of, this just seems like a lot more hassle than it's probably worth to us from a revenue standpoint and all these other complications?
We would, I, the, would we make money on this? I think not. I mean, the idea is that, that the municipality that funds the cameras in the first instance gets reimbursed, and then there's some sharing.
Right.
Would we make buckets of money? You know, not at those fine levels and not, no. But, I think the, you know, the possibility exists that it sends a message and that it causes more awareness and, and changes behavior, and, and that may be worth it.
Right, right. I'd just be curious, before we go down that road, how much behavior we need to change? Like, is it really a huge problem for us?
Well, and, I would just say, I think the, the awareness that, if there could possibly be a camera on, on a bus and it's not going to be the big camera everyone can see, they will never, people never know, I think that's a deterrent right there.
That's true. I've not seen one of these systems in person, I've just seen them, you know, photos of them and so on, and it looks like the same stop arm I've ever seen, so I don't know that you would know whether it's that or not.
Alright. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Capital projects, it's a really brief capital projects update in your agenda tonight. There's two, um, there's approval for, um, our construction manager and for our architect, for work on the 2019 capital project, uh, the roofs and track project that was approved as, uh, at the same time as our, as this year's budget. So, we thought, gee, it would be a good idea to just have a couple slides to let you know where we're at with, uh, the two ongoing capital projects. So, this will be very short, it's not intended to be a full review, but just kind of a, a short update. And there's also good news to share. So, uh, two pieces of good news in the 2013 classroom additions project. Phase one of that was the high school chiller. You'll notice it's comfortable in here tonight. There was, uh, there, there are two new chillers installed as part of that at the high school. One of them is up and running, um, and the second chiller, um, is online as of this week. So, we had some struggles with those systems, um, because it's construction and that's just should be expected, I think. But, as of, I think, as of the end of this week, um, that, the work itself will be done. It'll be a matter of buttoning up and finishing that first phase of, of this capital project. The, the ma, the majority, of course, of that project are the additions themselves, and this is the other piece of very good news. So, the construction documents, the, the plans, the specifications that we submit to SED for their approval for, um, for issuance of a building permit, were approved last week. So, we don't have the paperwork yet, but we got an email that they were approved, and I'd expect to see that, uh, any minute. So, we'll move forward then with, uh, the next fa, the next step then in that process is, uh, advertising for bids, bidding documents, um, you know, contractor walkthroughs, that whole piece, uh, so that we can accept bids and open bids in the August to September timeframe. We'll have a, uh, OACM meeting this Friday, and I think that'll be one of the topics of conversation, is what's our timing going to be? When, when do we want to advertise? When do we want to open and so on? Because the idea now is, we are on track, uh, for, uh, spring of 2020, so this upcoming spring will be, begin construction with an eye towards buttoning it up in time for school in the fall of 2021. So, some good news, it's at least on track.
Mark?
Yes.
Excuse me, is that on, um, I can't remember the timeline, is this within what you were expecting?
Yep, we're, that's about what we've been saying we're going to do, so we're on so far, so good.
Yeah, very good.
And then, uh, tonight's two agenda items relate to the, this capital project. It's in design, uh, right now, so we expect it to be, uh, completed in October for submission to SED. We'll have to see how those approval timelines go. They've, they've picked up, they've gotten better, um, but we would anticipate being able to bid that, uh, sometime in February, um, of 2020, and then with construction on about the same timeframe, we'd like to be able to dovetail those two pieces together. So, starting in summer of 2020, a little bit after the additions project, and again, complete through fall of 2021. So, I think we're on track so far with that as well, but again, we're very early in this process, so a lot more remains to be seen. Any questions on that? Yes?
Mark?
I'm just curious, how long? Did it take the state to do the approval this time versus, like, the other prompt times you've had to do it?
We asked for the, we used the expedited approval process for that, um, and it was much faster. I'm, but I would have to go back and look. I don't have the top of my head, no. I'd be taking a stab in terms of.
But, we did see a gain from the?
We did see gain, yeah, and it was, it's, it is, uh, just a much cleaner process, I think, in terms of, um, the back and forth, um, that we got comments fairly quickly. It, it was very worthwhile for us.
And do you, would we do that for the?
For this project?
Yes, the 2019?
We've talked about it, um, for roofs, track and chiller, and with being able to bid in February, I'm not sure that we will need to do that, so we're not, we haven't made that decision yet, um, but I'm not sure we will have to. Well, we've got a little bit more flexibility in the timing on this one. The additions, obviously, we had to be able to hit that first summer, or we were going to be pushed out an entire year again, so.
Just to follow up, is this process a little different because we're not building, we're just replacing, or it's the same?
It's, no, it's the same, it's all the same. You know, the math behind it and how they calculate state aid and the capacities and all of that is different, but in terms of the bidding, the specifications, the approval, there's really no, no difference whatsoever. This project may be, may be a little different, um, because of change, recent years' changes in the law around piggyback bidding and sort of the liberalization at the state level in the interest of cost savings and efficiency of, of 103 of the general municipal on a piece of the law that requires bidding. Much of this maybe, we may be able to do through cooperative contracts, and then you avoid the bidding process because it's essentially already bid. And much of this is going to, may fall under that, so, we'll have to see. We, the, the process up to that is exactly the same, but with this, we may have a few other choices from that, that, that spot forward, and we'll keep you informed if we decide to go down that road. We had, we did once before, if you recall, with the lights at the, at the, uh, high school for the, the turf field. Alright. Um, and then also on your agenda tonight, this is, uh, this is, tonight's an important night in terms of, of, uh, the cycle of school budget. It's the, it's the final setting of tax rates for this upcoming school year. You have in your board packet a comp, a complete analysis. It looks very similar to the, to the analysis that we gave you in June. In fact, it's only a couple of hundred thousand dollars different, um, and the recommendations are substantially the same. So, um, we do this twice, actually sometimes three times. So, the, the rhythm of this, uh, is that at the, be, at the, in the June meeting, and one of the June meetings before the end of the school year, we go through this process, we project where we'll end up in August, uh, we talk about, um, about our allocations of how we've done in the year, um, how we plan to do, uh, what we've accomplished in terms of, of, of budget and fund balance management and where we're at, and, and the board approved at that meeting a series of recommendations. But, that's sort of early. I mean, I, we are, our auditors left, um, left us a week ago, so we are just now kind of really starting to sew up, um, the year-end, and lots can and sometimes does change between, you know, June, when we're really working with, uh, April and May information, and now in August. That didn't happen this year, these numbers are very similar, the recommendations don't change a lot, but, uh, just in the interest of completeness, I, I just, uh, sort of summarize what we're recommending and what we've done. So, you begin the process, you begin every year with what you have, and then you have the result of operations. So, as we came into this year, we had, uh, we had assigned $2 million of fund balance to reduction of taxes. We'd kept our 4%, the, the district's 4% unreserved fund balance, um, and then you add, and then, you know, that number changes as the result of your year's operation. So, we brought in revenue, um, we brought in money that, that we had, uh, for, for purchase orders that were still outstanding at year-end, um, in order to ensure that we could, we could pay those, we brought in transfers from reserves for payment of buses, uh, and some other transfers, and we spent money. So, you see the analysis of expenditures and transfers. We had an approved elementary additions project, uh, the, um, the 2019 capital project included some funding from the general fund. We decided to fund the BOSI's capital project, so that's part of this as well. We had this year's bus purchases and year-end encumbrances, money that we need to set aside to pay outstanding bills. Interest has to be allocated to, to reserves, um, and we want to and recommend, one of the recommendations here, is that we still maintain that 4% and we applied, uh, about $2 million for the reduction of next year's taxes. So, with that, you end up, um, with an available fund balance at this point of about $1.3 million. Essentially, that is composed of sort of the two remaining moving parts that could change. At the previous meeting, you'd allocated five, about $555,000 to bring, um, our level of tax certiori up to about the 70% level of outstanding cases. I can tell you, we're not recommending that you change that funding, it's still 555, but I can tell you, I've got quite a stack of certiori, so, um, I, we haven't worked our way through those, but July this year, July was quite busy, uh, in terms of new claims coming through, so, we're still fine, the set, but we won't be at 70%. We'll have fallen a little bit off, we'll address it in future years. But, that 555 is part of that million dollars. You could elect to change it if you wanted to, don't recommend it. And we ended up a couple of hundred thousand dollars different, um, in, in terms of total, so the, the, uh, previous analysis showed, um, a smaller transfer to the Capital Reserve. We're ending up at about, hey, we're ending up at just under $800,000, at $796,000. So, that number really then, in all of this analysis, that transfer, slightly larger transfer to the Capital Reserve is the, um, is the only remaining, um, change to this. So, the good news is, we, you know, we've, uh, we are where we thought we would be. And in short, to summarize that, sort of all of that, um, we appropriated the three key numbers really, are, we're appropriating to reduce taxes, uh, as part of the next slide, our, um, our estimate of tax impact, um, $2 million. The levy is set at $65,162, that's what we proposed in the budget process, and we're maintaining that 4% under, undesignated fund balance. That's all interesting, but I think what people want to know is, what are my tax rates? And you can see them here. This is, um, um, these are the tax rates, um, final tax rates, uh, based on $65,152 with the $2 million, um, applied to reduction, um, and you can see the result of the calculations. They're, it's because of changes in assessment and equalization rate, the money shifts around a little bit. Walworth and, and Macedon are, have dropping equalization rates, as does Penfield, so you can see their rates end up being a little higher. That's a part of that math, and we've talked about that in the past. But, these are very much in line with what we estimated long ago in the, in the, um, and in fact, slightly under what we estimated in the newsletter, the budget newsletter, that presumably people relied on when they cast their vote. So, um, I think we're, um, we're in good shape with regard to that. Are there any other questions?
Board members? Lisa?
Hi. I'm going back a few slides. So, we're, we're funding our portion of BOSI's in cash?
Correct. Our portion is $22 million doll, oh, of, our portion is not 20. The, BOSI's capital project is $22 million. Our share of it is that $2.2 million, right?
So, when we did that, we were supposed to do that resolution?
And we did.
About the bonds, we just?
Right, so that resolution ex, um, exists to a sta, for, it serves two purposes. Sort of the broader purpose of everyone's authorized the existence of debt, so that anyone issue it. It would have specifically authorized us to issue debt if we needed to, um, but it also, um, is the board's commitment to funding of the project, and with that, it offers you the opportunity, you can always, if you have the authority to borrow, and that's what you were establishing, you always have the authority to not borrow and to pay cash, and the board chose that.
So, we don't have to do anything?
You don't have to do anything more, it's done.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then, we've, uh, part of our planning will be, um, that BOSI's capital project will then return us, and this was part of that presentation, um, that BOSI's capital project, as they complete that, they get state aid too, and we will receive our share of state aid on that back. And so, we're planning on building that into our capital project planning. As that money comes back, we need to know what we're doing with it, like, what, you know, what will our plan be? How will we handle that? And so, we've been having discussions and meetings, um, with Bernie Donigan. And so we've been having discussions and meetings with Bernie Donigan's office to make sure that we have a plan in place that fits with our needs as that cash comes back because you don't want it to be a surprise, right?
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Jim now to talk a bit about the 2019 leadership summit.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. July 23rd, 24th and 25th were three very exciting days for our leadership teams at Penfield Central School District. We had the fortunate experience of having Mr. Rick Wormley in to present to our administrators and teacher leaders on the 23rd and 24th. Rick Wormley is probably most notably known for his work around what's called standards based grading. And sometimes when folks hear that, it raises some some questions, but when you dig into really the components of standards based grading, it's really about differentiated instruction, about formative assessment, about high quality feedback and about really meeting students at their individual levels and holding them to high levels of accountability and high levels of academic excellence and achievement, which aligns very closely with our number one goal as a district. In addition to that, it does so that the practices, the instructional practices that Rick talks about not only hold kids to high academic standards, but it does so in a way that supports them socially, emotionally, and that's the key there. So we had two outstanding days of learning and did a little exercise at the start of day three, which is really just the leadership teams. We were able to bring in some extra teachers for the first two days, but day three is really that first day of action planning for the building leadership teams. And we started off the session with an activity called Four Corners, which is an example of a social emotional learning, warm welcoming activity. And I asked the folks in the room to stand in a corner of the room based on their comfort level and their excitement level, ranging from why haven't we done this yesterday to I'm scared out of my shorts and Jim has lost his mind, depending on the corner. And thankfully, there was nobody in that last corner and a vast majority of the folks of the 100 people in the room on that day were in the first two corners of really wanting to move toward implementation, so much so that we've really had to rein some of it back because we only had, you know, about 100 teachers there, 80 teachers there on the second day. So we've got a lot more learning to do as a district before we can move forward with implementing on a large district wide scale some of these practices. But the energy in the room, the motivation in the room was absolutely outstanding and that work's going to lead into the work of developing the action plans further that you'll see in our normal course of presentations come November as to how schools will be moving forward with looking at these practices over the course of the next five years, getting to a place where we are implementing these practices on a wide scale to continue to meet our number one goal, but do so in a way that's more socially and emotionally appropriate for all of our kids. And that really goes back to our listening sessions from the 1617 school year where we heard family members and students talk about the levels of anxiety and pressure to perform that we heard about and really wanting to address that while at the same time making sure that we are adequately preparing our students for the future beyond Penfield. So it was really a great a great couple of days to see. There's a couple of pictures here. The top one, it's hard to see, but Mr. Wormley is presenting at that time. That's a shot from the back of the room and then the bottom panoramic view is toward the be end of day two when our building teams were kind of wrapping up for the day and doing some reflection about what their next steps would be and how they wanted to move forward. But just a powerful three days, great to see the energy, the participation in the room and really excited about how it's going to help us move forward with our social emotional health and wellbeing action plan.
Nice. Board members, any questions or comments? What?
I can work it in there if you want.
I'm very proud of you.
I just I'll I'll just mention that it really was great bringing Rick Wormley in as as really just an absolute national treasure. I mean, he's if you follow him on Twitter, he's everywhere and he really has the ability to talk through standards based grading. You know, I'll throw the term standards based learning because it's less about the grade more about the learning and and this concept around trying to move towards, you know, empowering students to chase the learning versus chase the grade. So some really exciting pieces that tie right into what we're talking about when we talk about social emotional learning, you know, and and so it was very exciting. The staff was 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 reeling on board. And I just thanks to Jim and his team for bringing Rick in and for doing the work and the setup. It's a lot to to get in place and so I appreciate that. We're excited for this year and I'll just second Jim. We've had to and we say this nicely, rein people kind of back in a little bit because we didn't we want to make sure whenever we bring something big that we allow all teachers to have some say and then also talk with parents on what that looks like. So I'm excited and Policy Committee, get ready because a lot of this also falls under what our what our policies are and how does that work, so.
Wormley?
Yeah.
W O R N E L I. Yep. And I think it's just, you know, for the board's awareness, we've had teachers implementing some of these practices.
Oh, yeah.
Really over the last three years, but it's growing and that was kind of intentional. We supported teachers going to his conferences and learning these things and and growing it from the grassroots level so that it's not just a top down initiative, but it really is green gaining momentum from the bottom up. So we've got some folks here at the high school who are doing these things, particularly in the math and science departments, and then also some folks at the middle school level. And and a lot of these practices have been in place for a while at the elementary level, but there are some areas where we can still continue to improve at that at that level as well and we're excited about doing that work.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was really it was it was great. It was a great three days and so nice job, Jim. You set the bar high and can't wait to see what you're going to bring us next summer.
No pressure.
No, no, well, it was it was great.
Thank you.
That that concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, board members, we're on item five, facilities. Oh, wait a minute, I have to get there myself. There we go. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the board approved the change orders as described in the agenda? The above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by architect Vic Thomaselli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Mark Sansucci.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. Lunch fund budget, the okay, the attached sets forth the recommended lunch fund budget for the 2019-2020 school year. May I have a motion in a second that the lunch fund budget for 2019-2020 as recommended by by the food service department be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. That's hard to say, lunch fund budget. It's just kind of tripp-
I get what you're saying, 1920 school.
Well, I know, but let's not talk about that. I know, that's kind of scary. All right. Okay, may I have a motion in a second that the approval be given to the food service department for prices of school meals as listed above for the 2019-2020 school year and Joey put in the in his presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay, establishing tax rates 2019-2020 and funding of reserves. This was everything that Mark Sansucci just explained to us. And so may I have a motion in a second that the above 2019-2020 described transfers and adjustments be approved and that the school tax rate for the 2019-2020 school year be calculated on a real property tax levy of $65,152,132.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Authorization to contract with SEI Design. May I have a motion in a second that the board of okay, wait a minute. Okay, can I just skip to that? Yes. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with SEI Design for services related to the capital project as described above?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Wait, I did that. Okay. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to go to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with campus construction for services related to the capital projects as described in your agenda above?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Yay, Emily. No, okay, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Renewal of intermunicipal fuel agreement. The district allows the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to gas its patrol cars at the district pumps. The district is reimbursed for this gas by Monroe County through an intermunicipal agreement. The county is charged based on our cost of gas on state contract plus a 10 cent per gallon surcharge. The district initially entered into this notice or excuse me, into this agreement in 2006, 2007 and has renewed it annually. Either party may discontinue the agreement with 60 days' notice. Whereas whereas the county of Monroe has indicated a desire to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District and whereas the Board of Education finds that there is mutual benefit to such an arrangement, therefore be it resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the county of Monroe for the provision of vehicular refueling by the county for the period September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2020. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right. All right, we have a separation agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the written agreement between the superintendent of schools of the Penfield Central School District and an employee of the district executed on August 12, 2019. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, president's remarks. Sharon has, what are these, Sharon?
Tax warrants.
Tax what?
Warrants.
We have the tax warrants that we all have to sign. She'll after the meeting, she'll line them up and we'll just, if you remember, we do this every year. Mark, did you have a comment there?
About tax forms?
No, I I you know what? You moved your hand. I thought you had a question.
I do, I have a comment.
Okay.
I just finalized my math and the incoming kindergartner are the class of 2032. I just thought you should all know that. You're welcome.
Oh, my gosh, that's scary.
I just want to solve.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, really.
2032.
Yikes. All right.
Is that song in the year 2032?
Let's not wallow in our sorrows, shall we?
So who'll be on the board then?
I'm going to be 80.
All right, let's go to unfinished business here. We have our committee assignments and so it's right there on the agenda. This is our setup we all talked about, you know, signed up for what our availability is with the various committees that we're interested in serving on. It's all right there. Sharon, I know I told you steering, but I'm not on steering.
Okay.
Okay, so I talked to Becky about that. Becky Schultz?
All right.
Okay. All righty.
And Emily and I are sharing info exchange.
Okay.
Like is she?
No, I did not know that.
Okay, so she's going to do the four class meetings.
Right.
And I'm going to do the noon one.
That's perfect.
So it's like a good win-win.
That is a great win-win. Okay, so that's how they're doing it? They're going to alternate those?
Well, they're they're not all alternated, but I think there's two or three, four and the rest are noons.
Nice, very good. Oh, good, I'm so glad.
I knew Emily was going to propose.
Okay, great. Any questions or other comments about that? Okay.
Oh, I'm on the audit committee?
No new business then.
Wait a minute.
We, okay, Barb.
I'm on the audit committee?
Yes.
No, you didn't. You didn't.
I thought that we had talked about that.
Well, I thought we had talked about policy committee, but I don't remember the audit committee.
Because, okay, you don't. Is that something you can't do?
No, no, I just I was just a little bit surprised, that's all.
Well, I think there was a miscommunication. I thought we had talked about that and that, yeah, it's interesting and plus it's in it's in. It's one of the afternoon meetings.
Okay.
There's only four, I think.
Oh, there's only four.
Out of the whole year, yeah.
You're retired.
And I'm retired.
I thought it was three.
And Mark's there. Well, there you go. I've always wanted to be on the audit committee, but I just assumed because I was going to be on the policy committee.
Well, they don't meet at the same time.
I shouldn't assume anything.
Never so. But they don't meet at the same time because Tom is usually involved in meetings anyway, so.
There you go. Yeah. We'll be locked because we're just on labor relations as well, just the two of us because I'm losing Lisa.
No, I might come to some of them.
Oh, okay.
Because if some, it's interesting.
People don't care about this.
I think it's great. I think what they're hearing is my board members really like to spend time with me and I will come to as many committee meetings as possible.
We love to spend time.